Will the recorder please call the roll?
Councilor Dugger.
I'm here.
Councilor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Here.
Hassan.
Here.
Councilor Teeter.
Here.
Mayor Beatty.
Here.
And Councilors Kimmy and Tivnan are absent.
But not excused. I'm just kidding, they're excused. All right, with that, we have a pretty busy agenda tonight. We're going to start with visitor comments, and then we're swearing in our new judge. And then we have two proclamations. We have a short consent agenda, a work session tonight on developing framework for our new framework for developing a day center. So we're going to jump right into visitor comments. As a reminder, visitor comments are essential to the way local government works. However, this is not a time for a dialogue. In order to help us comply with Oregon's open meeting laws, this is a time for us to listen. If follow-up is required, we have our Assistant City Manager Dan here to take notes. With that, I'm going to invite Lisa and John up. You'll both have three minutes to address the council when you are ready.
Thank you so much for having us.
Of course, our pleasure.
I, my name is Lisa Dolizol. I'm the Sales and Business Development Manager for Relay Resources, whom you guys use presently for your janitorial for the city. I'd like to share more about Relay's leadership change and added capacity in our contract performance management and customer experience management. We have strengthened our relationship support at the chief and CEO level, adding a new Sales and Business Development Unit. And also, we are committed to real-time issue reporting and resolution with regular updates on actions taken to address and prevent issues. Our new organizational leadership, from the new CEO, Dr. Jennifer Komodo-Lubkey, to the establishment of a Sales and Business Development Function directly addresses contract performance and supports our excellent operational team. Moving forward, we are scheduling a reoccurring partnership performance meeting to ensure alignment on our scope of work and service delivery. These meetings will also provide an opportunity to discuss personnel issues, performance metrics, and any additional service requests. With our investment in staffing and training of our contract teams, I want to emphasize why Relay Resources remains the best partner for the city of Beaverton. Our commitment to the continuity of service and employee retention is unwavering. We have significantly improved our contract performance management and have an enhanced quality assurance program that will deliver measurable results. And most importantly, though, Relay Resources stands by our mission to transform workplaces and communities by championing disability inclusion. Our core values, justice, equity, strengths, impact, and growth, guide everything we do. And we believe that these values align with the vision of Beaverton as an inclusive and forward-thinking community. We are committed to earning back the city of Beaverton's trust and to deliver the high-quality services that the city deserves and also we expect. We look forward to continuing our partnership and to working closely with the team to achieve our shared goals. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Jonathan Padilla, who is our Operational Director for Janitorial, to give a little more details. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for having us today. My name is Jonathan Padilla. I am the Director of Janitorial Operations at Relay Resources. Relay Resources has been honored to serve the city of Beaverton since 2006 under a $1.4 million contract. The quality of our services and strength of our relationship with the city of Beaverton have been tested at times over the course of the contract. We recognize that missed services and inconsistent quality delivery have strained our collaboration, and this is something we take very seriously. In response, Relay Resources has implemented a comprehensive performance improvement plan, which includes over $2 million a year of investment in training, staffing, infrastructure, and quality assurance, all designed to rebuild trust and ensure the highest standard of service delivery while providing ongoing training and support for our workforce. I'd like to address three key areas: performance management, quality assurance, and issue resolution. We have introduced a new liaison between the city of Beaverton and Relay Operations to ensure open and clear communication on all contract-related opportunities, requests, and issues. We are also co-developing templates and metrics for a quality standard scorecard, which will help consistent evaluation of our service delivery. Last month, we launched and retooled a quality assurance program led by a subject matter expert. This program includes protocol for quality audits, real-time issue reporting, and quality assurance scorecards that meets the city of Beaverton's specific needs. Our goal is to resolve performance issues faster and make proactive service improvements. Contract pricing can be negotiated; the lives and future of 16 employees, some of those with disabilities cannot. These are dedicated janitors that have served our community for a combined 20 years, each of them who are concerned about transitioning to a new contractor. We are more than ready to sit at the table and discuss options on how we can continue servicing the Beaverton community and the disabled population that keeps a clean and safe work environment for all. I ask that a decision be made to reconsider the successorship process and be a partner in supporting Relay's mission. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, up next on our agenda is something pretty awesome. We get to swear in our new judge. Someone asked Judge Britton to come up and say a few words. Councilor, I think it's appropriate we go down and join them, so we're not in the background. And he's got his family here with him as well.
This is their first city council meeting.
This is an easy city council meeting.
All right, please raise your right hand. I, Tucker Rosetto.
I, Tucker Rosetto.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Beaverton.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Beaverton.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of a municipal judge.
Discharge the duties of a municipal judge.
Of the Beaverton Municipal Court.
Of the Beaverton Municipal Court.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Good start.
Okay, it's been a while since we've sworn in a new judge, so that was awesome. And it's always great to have our employees' families with them to do it. So, okay, now we're on to our two proclamations. We have a walk and roll the school day that Councilor Teeter is going to help with, and Councilor Hartmeier-Prigg will read our Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation.
Thank you. This is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas Beaverton students and families are joining thousands of people from around the world for International Walk and School Today, Walk and School Day, and whereas the Beaverton Safe Routes to School Program creates safe, convenient, and fun opportunities for youth to walk, skateboard, bike, scooter, and ride the bus to and from schools, and whereas making walking and biking into school a safer and more appealing transportation choice encourages a healthy and active transportation lifestyle from an early age, and whereas Walk and School Today, wow, Walk and School, Walk and Roll to School Day generates enthusiasm for the program and allows parents to experience that when more people walk and roll to school, the routes are safer and easier for everyone to use, and whereas fewer cars on the road on the roads to school means less traffic congestion and pollution, and whereas the city of Beaverton is a proud partner of the Beaverton School District's Safe Routes to School Program for the health and safety of our children and to foster the creation of livable, vibrant communities. Now therefore, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of Beaverton, does hereby proclaim October 9th as International Walk and Roll to School Day in the city of Beaverton and urges all residents to join students, parents, teachers, and community leaders from around the world who are coming together to walk and roll to school and in their neighborhoods.
And I know that the vice-councilor is not old enough to roll, but if you want to come, roll with the Beattys on Walk and Roll to School Day, we'll allow it. And the same with you, if you don't want to be creepy, come join my family. Go ahead, Councilor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Just waiting for a "don't be creepy" message my way, too. All right, a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor, the city of Beaverton. Whereas the city of Beaverton recognizes that the indigenous peoples of the Americas have been stewards of this land since time immemorial, and whereas the city recognizes that the Towaltin Valley was the land of the Atfalati Band of the Kallia Puya Indians, after whom the valley is named, and whereas the city recognizes that the area currently known as Beaverton was a Native American village called Chiquapie, or Place of the Beaver, and whereas the city recognizes the value of the many contributions past and present that indigenous peoples have made to this community, and whereas the United States endorsed the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples on December 16, 2010, recognizing the right to the dignity and diversity of their cultures, traditions, histories, and aspirations, which shall be appropriately reflected in education and public information. And whereas in 2016, Beaverton officially declared the second Monday of October Indigenous Peoples' Day in Resolution Number 4408 and reaffirmed its commitment to respect the human rights of Beaverton's American Indian, Alaska Native, and Indigenous communities. And whereas the city of Beaverton has a responsibility to oppose systemic racism towards indigenous peoples of the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty, income inequality, disproportionate educational and social outcomes, and lack of access to essential health services, leaving the community at heightened risk, especially during a pandemic, and whereas the city of Beaverton participates in a regional tribal affairs collaborative to seek to build a foundation for greater understanding, honoring, and engaging with area tribal nations in the future. Now therefore, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the city of Beaverton, does hereby proclaim October 14th, 2024, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Beaverton.
Thank you, Councilor Hartmeier-Prigg. And I know I've given this history lesson before, but this came forward from the Human Rights Advisory Commission when I was their liaison. And the Chair, who is now Representative Farah Chichi, is the one that brought this to the city's attention and really worked on asking the city to proclaim Indigenous Peoples' Day over Columbus Day. And we've been doing that now since 2015, along, just to go to show that community members make a big impact in what we do here in the city. So I'll have to send this over to Representative Chichi, so she could see it. With that, get ready for the royal rumble. I'll accept the consent agenda from whoever turns their mic on first. All right, Councilor Hassan, go.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Hassan and seconded by Councilor Dugger. Any discussion on tonight's very lengthy consent agenda? Seeing none, will the recorder call the roll and keep it fresh?
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Councilor Teeter.
Yes.
Councilor Dugger.
Yes.
Councilor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Yes.
Councilor Hassan.
Yes.
And Councilors Kimmy and Teeter are absent.
Make sure we tell Councilor Timmy, or Kimmy, that today was a fun day on council, and he missed it. With that, we have our big work session on the agenda. Our Assistant City Manager Sia, I think, is the one leading this conversation. With that, I'm going to make sure to introduce your friends, and we'll turn the floor over to you. And if the new Megan wants to join you, by all means, make it a party.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Good evening, my name is Celia Lindstrom. I'm your Assistant City Manager. With me is Sarah King. I just have a few opening comments before I turn it over to Sarah to walk us through our work session slides today. First, for our viewing audience, just the 10-second version of what an access center is. It is a day shelter for people who are experiencing homelessness or unstable housing with wraparound services. You're going to hear more details from Sarah here in a minute. We, and next slide, please. We are going to do a couple of things tonight. First, we're going to do a little background on what an access center is and the access center project. And then we want to get some feedback from you about two things. One is just a first draft of our access center siting guidelines. And the second is to get your feedback on our community engagement plans around those draft guidelines. So those are the two things we hope to do tonight. Now, I also want to let you know that we do have, Mayor Beatty made reference to our new Megan, Chad Stover is in the audience. He's now in Week Three, so he's an old hand now. So he's standing ready to catch any balls we may pitch his direction out of this work session.
I told him I would only call him the new Megan for two months, so we have a few more weeks left.
You heard it. So with that, I will turn it over to Sarah. Please take it away.
Okay, good evening. We have an idea of what access centers are. We have several access centers in Washington. Okay, is that on? All right, we have, we do. Can you hear me? Yeah, there we go, okay. We do not have an access center in the Beaverton area, and that's something, of course, we and Washington County would like to remedy. Washington County has been sponsoring the establishment or expansion of access centers here in Washington County through funds from the Supportive Housing Services Bond. With that bond money, Washington County would like to see access centers provide a variety of services and resources here that we've got on this slide. They are looking to have access centers open seven days a week, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Access centers are meant for people who are experiencing homelessness or are also at risk of becoming homeless. They allow for, also, 424/7 operations and temporary overnight use during inclement weather. And like our shelters, access centers are meant to be low barrier, but they do include, excuse me, they do exclude use and possession of firearms, non-prescription drugs, and alcohol. Next slide, please. Access centers are a product of strong partnerships. Those partnerships include Washington County, who offers funds to nonprofits for access center establishment or expansion. Nonprofits are expected to secure a site and remodel as needed. At least, that's the model that Washington County has been following of late. City of Beaverton's role in this process is to support or approve the center's location, and the operator is expected to negotiate a good neighbor agreement with surrounding businesses, residences, and institutions. Next slide, please. For your, well, for our background and resource, we did include our previously adopted shelter siting criteria. I'm not going to get into them here, but you'll notice as we talk about the draft guidelines that we're proposing, they look a lot like our shelter siting. There's good reason for them. There's, you know, we're serving a very similar population, only slightly, a little slightly different, and so it makes sense that many of the best practices for sitting shelters are the same for access centers. We can refer back to this slide if we need to. So moving on to guidelines here, these draft guidelines were developed based on best practices, based on experience, and based on input feedback from Washington County. And as I said, they're very similar to our shelters guidelines. Transit access is key, preferably on a high-frequency transit line. The ability to engage with neighborhood is important, both so that people feel like they are part of the community, but also very practically to avoid isolated areas for the purpose of safety. Standalone buildings work best, and they're also the easiest to procure for access centers. The lots need to be large at the sites, and parking lots need to be large enough for parking, and if needed, storage. Storage is important and not always available in a building, so we need space for a storage unit or pod if needed. ADA-accessible site and building is critical, either sites that are already ADA-compatible or can be fairly easily and feasibly made compatible. Any requirements, the building size and configuration needs to meet the program requirements of Washington County. And of course, if we end up having other funding or other funders available, part of the access center funding, they may also have additional requirements. So then there's the question of, are there other things here that are missing? And we know that some of those are schools and daycares, and we'll talk about those right now. So be thinking about if there's anything missing here. Let's move on to the next slide. Schools and daycares. So we know that there's concern, or there's potentially concern, about where we might cite these, and if there are any kinds of uses that might, or which we might want to be extra cautious in terms of citing. The two that we have looked at are schools, and those include public and private schools, as well as daycares, and those are licensed daycares. We have excluded in-home daycares from the sort of analysis that I'll show you in a minute, just because they tend to be a little bit more transitory. Licensed daycares tend to stay in one place for quite a bit.
Sarah, if I can chime in just quickly on that about the in-home daycares, that's consistent with what we did with HB 3115, our time, place, and manner. We did look at daycare facilities, but excluded the in-home daycare. So consistency there.
So if there is some concern about proximity between access centers and schools and daycares, staff has proposed two options for you to consider tonight. First is that, I'm going to start with number two, which is a fixed buffer, could include a buffer around any of these schools and daycares that limit eligible areas for an access center. 500 feet is one example, 1,000 is another. And just to give you an idea of what 500 feet mean, that's roughly two downtown city blocks, in terms of distance, and 1,000 lineal feet is four downtown blocks. And the other option is that we don't specifically look at a buffer, because buffers don't always consider context, and instead that the provider provides a mitigation impact narrative about, regarding any nearby schools or daycares, that talks a little bit about what the potential impacts could be and how those impacts would be mitigated. That's a little bit more of a custom approach, if you will. Next slide, please. We prepared a couple of maps. These maps are very general. They're meant to just show a little bit about what an impact, what a buffer, what kind of impact a buffer may have on availability. What you see here is, anything that is in blue would be an area that is outside of a 500-foot buffer of daycares and schools. Some of that is along commercial corridors, some of that is in residential areas, some of it is in industrial areas. Quite a word about residential areas. Residential areas tend to not be on strong transit lines, so I think it's probably pretty unlikely that residential areas would actually provide a location that would meet the kind of guidelines that we'd be looking at that best serves the population. If we move to 1,000 feet, let's go to the next slide. Of course, you can see quite an impact, quite an impact in terms of taking availability. This wider buffer, of course, limits options further. Move to the next slide. In addition to looking at the kinds of guidelines that we have taken from best practices, we also are recommending that we reach out to the community. These are some ideas. Partner agencies, of course, those are the obvious ones, our nonprofit partners that we already work with, and community members, both in the city, that are involved in city government and city affairs, people experiencing homelessness, and of course, the general public as well. If there's any groups that are missing in this list of folks that we should reach out to about these guidelines, please do let us know who we should be reaching out to. I think with that, I am going to conclude my presentation. Did you have anything to add?
I think the only thing, do just the next slide quickly. Next steps for staff are just that we will engage with the agencies and the public on the draft guidelines, and then return to you with the results of that. And so the two questions, again, for you all tonight, do you have feedback on the draft guidelines that we take out for engagement, and then feedback on the who we engage with? Those are the two questions for you. With that, we turn it over to you.
Awesome, thank you so much. I'm going to probably answer those, but also add some other things, so thank you for the framework. For a bit of historical context, I asked the city manager to bring this to the city council, so we could weigh in a little bit on siting criteria, because about four months ago, I got word of where a day center was purchased, or potentially going to be located when the county purchased it. And it was not a great location, relatively near a school, would have had people traversing through our downtown core to go there. And so I wanted to make sure that the council was able to weigh in a little bit on these decisions, so that way another outside agency, which is very likely the county in partnership, come in and purchase it. That's the good side of why we're here today. The kind of un-great side of now is the fight that we're having with Metro over SHS, and whether or not a day center funding is in the criteria for future funding. So it's a little bit of a risk that if we don't move quickly, we could end up losing the funding for this because of the way that, and all the conversations we've had with SHS and Metro. So I do think in our wanting to go out and communicate with all these partners, that we need to prioritize speed. I think the list that you have is a great list. And Sia and I have gone and toured all the day centers in the county, and we've gone out and I've asked a lot of questions, and I asked providers, like, what should I be thinking about when we're doing these siting criterias? How should we be thinking about it? We visited one last week in Cornelius that was out on TV Highway, not near anything else. It was out in the farmland, and, you know, my work at Virginia Garcia often tells me that we prioritize transportation as the number-one thing when that's not really the hurdle. This was out in the middle of, on the road in Cornelius, and they told us, like, transportation's not the hurdle. It is near a bus line, which is really important, but like, we tend to prioritize how we operate in our daily lives is what our houseless community needs to operate. And so I thought that was an interesting facility, because they didn't have the neighbors to deal with. They didn't have any schools nearby. It was out there, the staff seemed to kind of like being out there. We also visited one right in downtown Hillsborough, like, blocks from the courthouse and the MAC station, that had its own list of problems, because they were right in the business district, and how they were doing. And then we visited one in Tigerd, that's off of Highway 99, very near Tigerd City Hall and Tigerd High School. Not within 1,000 feet of Tigerd High School, but relatively close, and on a major road, on a bus line. We're talking about siting criteria today, but what I've really impressed upon staff is really about the management of the building. When I visited the facilities that didn't have people queued out front, it had a much more appeal to the neighborhood. And I think about drop-in centers like Home Plate, they don't have their guests sitting outside on the sidewalk and out to really draw the attention from the neighborhood. So I think once we pick the site, there's going going to be a way for us to help and manage and mitigate how they're queuing people to come in the building, and how people experience that shelter, not only of, from the dignity standpoint of those going in, but from the dignity of the neighbors. And not just you should be seen and not heard, but we don't really see that with any other businesses where people are queuing and spilling out into the road. So with that, like, I want us to consider not near a school. I also think about proximity to a similar shelter now. Like, if we could find a place that's relatively close to our center now, that's, I mean, I know we can't write the script on where it is, but I think that would be the easiest to go, because council, the de facto day center in Beaverton right now is the library, near a school, near a neighborhood, and where people are. And so like, as we're thinking about this, we've got to move a little bit expeditiously here to get, you know, we're still going to have people visiting the library, but like, that's where we're at right now. And once we lose our, our shelter down there, we're going to have to find a place for our friends to go. So I think 1,000 feet is too far. That's just unrealistic in that map, particularly given the criteria that Beaverton has a less than 2% commercial vacancy rate right now. I like it from the, the daycare center, the at-home ones, I think, would be too challenging, when I know, I've seen maps of our licensed in-home daycare, and if we added that to this list, it'd probably look like the 1,000 feet. And so, but I do think, what is like, what, it won't be in the citing criteria, but the management criteria, because a few of us also visited a shelter in Portland where they had fencing and were able to do a little bit of buffering. So I think there needs to be a whole second conversation of expectations of a good neighbor agreement, what buffering looks like with those neighbors in that neighborhood if we chose to move nearby. But I think the list with TBFNR, the school district, us, and THPRD is the right place to start, because the other aspect is, when we start building those concentric circles and asking too many people, they, they don't have the responsibility that we have, and you're going to slow this down and, and lose the, we're going to run the risk of losing the funny, funding by trying to be perfect instead of getting it done. My chat says nobody, so if you guys are interested. Okay, Counselor Teeter.
Okay. I've got a few questions, Sarah. We're talking about the access center. Do we know general hours or times of day when the center would be open?
Yeah, it's seven, seven days a week, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Okay.
And then Washington County is also, I don't want you to forget that Washington County is also looking for a center that can be converted to an emergency inclement weather overnight during those emergencies.
But it's important to note, because we've talked about this, if it has to open because of inclement weather, it's very likely nothing else is open.
Right. Okay. Okay. I was looking at the options for having buffers or having that more flexible narrative description. Really interested in that narrative buffer, where people or partners or providers can describe what the buffer would be, what tools or resources could they put in to make it fit in better with the surrounding neighborhood uses. I do think that could be really challenging, because it's hard to be objective with narratives like that. Like, I'm thinking back to planning commission applications, and it's just, get into narrative, and it just becomes more, a little bit more confusing. So I like having a little bit of a flexible option. It just, I struggle to see how well it would work. So I don't have a clear direction there. It's like, I like having that option. In case there is a really good opportunity within, like, a closer distance to one of these uses that we might want to buffer around, but if with some really good, like, site design, maybe it could be improved. I like our outreach to service providers to see what they think, other access center providers to see what they've seen work well, and what would have been some challenges. I wouldn't go as far as in 1,000-foot buffer either. I think 500 feet would be fine with me, too, if we do that.
Counselor Duggar.
Yeah. Hey, thank you for this. I do have a few questions. So what are, the mayor mentioned Hillsborough. What other Washington County cities have day shelters at this point?
So we've got three others, Cornelius, Hillsborough, and Tigard.
Okay. And what rules do they have in place? Do they have the buffers?
They, most of them have been in place for a while, so I doubt it, other than the cities may have their own restrictions around, kind of the similar thing that we do around camping, within whatever definition they did for their time, place, and manner regulations. That would be my guess, unless you know of them.
No, I mean, we asked them that they didn't have strict criteria, because the Hillsborough shelter was identified pre-COVID, and the Tigard shelter is their long-term serving one, that they are converting from a day center they're also building next door. And the Cornelius one had been there over 20 years.
Got it.
Long time.
What feedback has come back to, do we know from, from those, like this Hillsborough or Cornelius or the county, have we received feedback on the, on, from neighbors particularly, or neighboring businesses, on what's going well and what, what isn't going well? Because I think-
For the, for the access centers that currently exist, you mean?
Correct.
Yeah. We could do more outreach on that. I know when we visited them, we heard a good chunk about things that they kind of changed over time in order to be more responsive to the, to the neighbors, and so we could definitely learn from them on that.
Yeah, that would be really important to me, if you could do that. Also, are there, kind of pivoting a little bit for, for the operation, I really like what you suggested around, like, performance, are there performance guarantees with, with nonprofits that we can do? This is my concern, and the feedback I received is, is, we ask a lot of our shelters, we ask a lot of our, I'm presuming we're going to ask a lot of our, our day use centers for dealing with crisis, you know, we ask crisis management, we ask a lot of the neighbors around them, right, for patience and whatnot. And, and I feel like we can, we can continue to do that if we have a performance plan in place, to make sure that we, you know, that if someone's in crisis, we call them right away. I mean, we saw what happened in the park. These are, these are concerns from the neighbors. So are there performance guarantees for the operation that we could insert, or have you guys seen that in others? And the reason that's important, and I know we're discussing citing, is like, that is influence, will influence whether we need a buffer in my mind.
I think it's important to know, though, that we're not the operator, so we can't put those kind of criteria. That's from the county. And so what's in our, our rules and reg, which was in our purview is what we're doing is, is sheltering. I think we could also ask about a good neighbor agreement, but I think it would be inappropriate for us to try to do that when this is a county-run facility.
Yes. I think the, the only other piece is that currently there's not SHS dollars, or there wasn't SHS dollars involved in the other three day centers, the other three access centers. And it's just recently that that county funding has come in, and that is the mechanism to put kind of requirements around them.
Okay.
So this one would have that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's just, just, so, so we are just, and again, this goes back to the citing question as far as developing the buffers. When I think of the root cause of homelessness, right, houselessness, very broad spectrum, right? And, and to serve those, you know, our neighbors as well as possible, are there any specialized facilities? You know, are there, is there a model where, where certain root causes of houselessness can be treated at one facility versus another facility, right? You know, if you're, if you're battling addiction, maybe you go to one facility, or if you're, you know, if you have economic trauma, you go to another. Is that, is that a model that we've ever seen operate? And, and the reason I ask is like, again, trying to think of the buffering, but like, I think most people are comfortable with helping their neighbors. What they don't want is like, people doing drugs on the sidewalk in front of them, and let's be honest, let's just throw that out. You know, that, that is a concern of ours, and, and just people facing various different mental traumas and stuff. It's, it makes it difficult in the neighborhood. So have we seen any other models operate for that?
Yeah. A couple of things, I guess, I'd say to that. One, that our system of care is one that needs to be integrated. And so, for instance, we have the new, they call it the CAT, it's the Center for Addictions, Triage and Treatment, that's going to be coming online soon, next year. And so the ability for, right, we're all looking forward to that. The ability for the different service providers to lean into their strengths, but also be able to refer and lean into the relationships we have with providers who are more specialized in certain areas. I mean, the access center is going to be the, the kind of first door people walk through. And from there, their needs will get triaged, and then referred to services. That's kind of the, the way that model works. And so it is really important, then, of course, that they have really good working relationships with, for instance, the outreach providers, because this is a site-based, the outreach providers will be doing that. So it really is kind of an integration of services rather than having everything necessarily be one stop. But they will have all the kind of front door services in place there to meet the basic needs.
That's super helpful, actually. I think, I mean, I, I hope people watching heard that. Like, I think that's, you know, this isn't just a place to go and get on a computer and then leave. Like, you can actually access services. So I think that's really helpful to hear, and they have a pathway, particularly when that center, the CAT, opens. I think that's, I think it makes perfect sense to do, you know, as little buffer as possible. I think a 500 is reasonable for me to start. I would, I would ask, but with, with any of the facilities, regardless if there's a buffer, that they have a mitigation plan. I believe you asked, or you mentioned that. I think that's perfectly reasonable, too. Yeah, these are going to be, you know, in a, I don't anticipate them being in the residential area just because of transit and whatnot, but I think if we, I could support a 500-foot buffer with, with, with that context plan or that mitigation plan in place, I think I could, I could support that. And that, that's all I have. Thank you.
I just have one question for you. Who do you think is watching us on TV?
Everyone in Beaverton.
Obviously. Counselor Hussin.
Couple of questions, and then quick comments. You mentioned the SHS funding, like, running out. Is there like a, what's the-
We've had like, ad nauseam conversations about this. They're trying to change the formula for it. And so they, they see everything as unallocated as access, and they're trying to move that into housing. And so the money that was identified for this project is technically, because of the way the rules are, anything more than 12 months out, even for planning, is not allocated. So any unallocated money is at the risk of Metro moving to a different pot.
So speed is our friend. You made this comment about the access center, and I just have to say it, but like, the triage model, like, if you know people who work in an ER, it's like, not really sustainable. So just, it's a cool reference, but just being, thinking about that. Like, I know ER docs who, like, leave ERs, because you cannot triage all of the things that walk into that space. So just putting it out there for you to think about. And I support either, right, requiring a provider mitigate impact or a 500-foot buffer. I don't know that we need more than that. I feel pretty comfortable with the folks that are working on this. I shared a lot of my comments already with staff, but okay, when I think of this funding, you know, it's folks who are typically, you know, experiencing chronic homelessness. But there's a second round or group of people that I think of a lot, which is families, and families who are experiencing homelessness. And I just urge us to continue to think about how we make this relevant to those groups and those communities. I don't know the data today. I did ask, and I will still put it out there that I'm curious, like, what is our population? There was a time when Beaverton School District had the highest population of students experiencing homelessness, and so how are we helping those communities? So I understand that, like, this is a step in that direction. I hope that it continues to center both our communities experiencing chronic homelessness, but also figuring out, kind of, making sure we're kind of looking at those, both of those populations. I think the folks that you're engaging with are perfect. Obviously, if it's going to get in the way of speed, then please, you know, move quicker rather than not. I think the only thing, and I think maybe Dob, you know, covers this, is just ensuring that we've got some culturally specific partners in the area. I, you know, I'll let you kind of decide who could be some folks that might have some of that background. I don't know if Apano is active enough, or Asentro is active enough in Beaverton, but like, getting those perspectives, I think, are going to be really critical. I think when communities of color experience homelessness, sometimes it's different than other communities. Full disclosure, I'll be hosting about 15 people in my home soon. I'm sure it's going to violate some sort of a code, but that's what we do. They are not experiencing homelessness. We're just hosting family, but that's very standard. And I just think of our families who could be dealing with that and something that's going on. So that's all I have.
And we do have rules around occupancy, so keep that information to yourself. Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions, too. Is the goal to purchase the building? I know it said standalone, but is, like, can it be leased or purchased? Does that matter as part of what they're looking for?
I, I think the ultimate goal is to have an access center, whether it's leased or purchased, I think will actually be up to the provider.
Okay.
So I'm mostly hearing about purchase, but I assume lease is on the table as well.
Okay. Yeah, because I was thinking, like, then, if one of those was required, then, like, standalone, to me, might not be required, right? Just to get flexibility of finding something. But I think then you'd have to kind of consider the context of what's near it. I also would like to be flexible with the buffer or the mitigation. Like, I'm, I'm good with either, because I think speed is really critical here. I'm curious, I think it's a little hard for me with the, the statement that, like, other funding partners could give other criteria. Do we have any, like, any anticipation of what that could be? Like, or, or is this typically kind of a standard set, and so we shouldn't really anticipate something out of that field?
Let me say, I don't think there's anything on the table right now.
Okay.
It's just a thought, particularly as we, just a, just a thought to be expansive. If there are other funding sources, sometimes they come with other strings.
Okay.
And, and typically, our nonprofit partners have to braid together several funding sources, which we, we know that they're already doing with the existing access centers, and they're likely to have to do with this as well. So yes, expansive is the right word for it, just to allow for those circumstances where they might have multiple funders.
Okay. I think, it's not that I don't think we should talk to partners, but I'm curious if we don't have all this information already from when we cited our shelter, right? Because with the criteria being so similar, can we go back to the feedback we've already received from them? And then if there's maybe a gap in what we talked to them about, narrow the scope, just to quicken the engagement and to, we've heard a lot in different engagement moments of, you ask me the same thing over and over again, what are you doing about it? Not in this context necessarily, right? But we do go to the same groups a lot. And so I would just say, if we could look at what we did before we cited our current shelter, and just see if there's gaps in engagement to, to limit, and hopefully that also can help expedite. But I, I agree. I think speed is honestly my most critical thing. The other thing I was thinking about, Mayor, when you talked about the location, like, having something near the core, I'm wondering if it's like, the, the libraries where people go, because that's the only place they could go? And knowing that our shelter site is, is nearby, should we actually look at somewhere else in the city, right? So that, because it may be hard to get, I, I was a little unclear. You said transportation is not their concern, meaning they can get around fine?
Yeah, a lot of people get on the bus, but like, shelters close for a couple hours a day for cleaning and other things. So there, there are times-
They might just need somewhere else to hang out nearby.
They have to go somewhere else nearby. And not everyone in an access center is going to be in the shelter. You know, when we visited Cornelius, they talked a lot about that where people who are for a lack of better space out on BLM land, and then came in because they served a hot meal, and they spent two or three hours there to kind of break up and mitigate their day. And a lot of these, and Counselor Tivnan's not here for this comment, but a lot of those access centers also serve as an address for mail. And so a lot of people come in to get their mail, because a lot of these people that are houseless actually have other services, like social security and VA and other, other aspects, and they need that go. And so I think if it's near a bus line, a lot of times, there's a lot of time in the day, they could take the bus back and forth. So it's not that walking distance needs to be it. But one of the few places in Beaverton where you could go for free-
Yeah.
-without being kicked out-
Yeah.
-use the internet, use the restroom, is the library.
Right.
And so this is acting as this, this facility for us right now.
Yeah. Yeah. I, and so I guess I'm just thinking, would geographic diversity, I know we, we're like, what, five square miles or something? It's not like we're huge, but would another area, like, I'm open to kind of anywhere in the city, so, you know, just in case, like, there's folks who, it is really hard to get to the, you know, since the current shelter, or the, the upcoming shelter will be so nearby. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah. I, I think it's going to be hard for us to be picky and choosy, given our, our success in commercial space right now. But I wanted to make sure that the council, you know, I, we figured this is where we were going to be when Sia and I discussed it. I don't think anyone said anything. I think we probably said Counselor Tivnan's going to say this, Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg's going to say this. We're, we're, we all think we're unique, but I think we all have our own profile of what's important to us. I'm shocked to say that Counselor Hassan said that we should think about communities of color. I mean, I think we are, they already know this information about us, and so the presentation we got was tailored to where I think we're supposed to be. I think the challenging piece now is going to be finding a space. But also, with these kind of rules in place, it's going to give some guidance to what they should be looking for. And that was important to me, because it can't just be wherever you think you want to buy a building in the city. Yep. Well, do you have everything you need from us?
Sarah, you're good?
Yes. Thank you all very much.
All right. Well, that was seemed easy, Sia. Thank you. All right, we have one last item. Council new business. Anyone yammering? Let's see. Counselor Hussin.
It's me. I'm sorry. I am between you- I'm sorry, I am between you and the evening, but I have to share this.
You do have nine minutes.
I, I, I know. In fact, I should use all...
You have two.
Nine. Three. This is a little heavy, but I wanted, I promised I would share this. I had a former Beaverton High School student reach out. Y'all know I taught at Beaverton High School. She is Lebanese. She lost some family members a couple weeks ago in what's going on, and she just, oh, she asked me to share a couple things. Their father left Lebanon around the age 13 and went to school and worked here in America without knowing anyone or anyone speaking the language. Their mom grew up in Lebanon and got displaced, moved over four, 15 times growing up because of the war. Her grandparents have supplied eggs for the entire country since the 1950s. Two weeks ago, her 58-year-old cousin and 25-year-old son got killed in, in an airstrike in their home on Thursday. This was a husband, a grandfather, and a father to six. They have multiple family members here in Oregon-Washington. Most of their younger family graduated from the Beaverton School District. They just asked me to share that. I, there's nothing more than just wanting to hold space for families who are continuing, continuously being impacted by what's happening. It's happening, you know, we're seeing crisis here in the United States as well and abroad, but I promised that I would share those words. So thank you for letting me close on that. And if anybody wants to close on a more positive note, I'm okay with that, too.
I had two things. First, I, I know, I think we've met since then, but I didn't, don't think I brought it up. We did have the chance to serve dinner at Home Plate, and it was like, one of my favorite nights as a city counselor. It was really wonderful to spend time at that location and, and just serve a meal and cook a meal for people. And so as we were cooking, I noticed things that I really, I really wanted in the kitchen that were not there. And so I did ask, the mayor and I asked if they would be willing to provide us a list of things that they need, and I would love for us to coordinate like, a council gift if anyone would like to contribute. And I, I can work on getting everything, but that's something I would love to do if anyone is interested in participating, totally no pressure ask. But I think it was just, it was very meaningful to me, so I thought that could be something that would be helpful for anyone that goes to serve a meal there to have all the tools they need. And the second thing I wanted to ask, and Dan, you get to be the city manager in charge tonight to take my request, and I'll be curious what my colleagues think, but I would really appreciate if we don't have council on election nights, especially this election night. I think there's just gonna be a lot going on. I know that this, we're only four weeks out now, essentially, you know, and so scheduling-wise, I don't know what that does, but I would request that we do not have, hold council on election nights.
And historically, as I keep reminding our city administration, we've never have held council on election night, because it's not just about us being on the ballot, a lot of us work for candidate.